6:30 PM, I'm calling the meeting of the Enfield Planning Board to order. We are in the Enfield DPW facility and also virtually on the Teams platform. Members present at the table from my left.
Dan Kylie.
I'm David Frack.
Bill Vermeer.
Brad Rich.
Tim Jennings.
Eric Russell.
Staff members.
Bob Taylor.
Whitney Banker.
And joining us virtually.
Linda Jones.
Hi Linda.
Hello.
I see that we have our guests, our consultants, Mark and Steve.
Evening.
So rather than take up their time listening to all of our routine stuffs and reports, if there's no objection, I'd like to get directly to the New Hampshire HOP grant part of the agenda. And Steve, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right, before we jump, Mark, you can hear everything okay?
Yes.
All right, I think Mark's camera is frozen a couple of times. I don't know if you all noticed. That's why he logged off and back on, but as long as he can hear us.
I can hear. You do not need to see.
Well, we see you, but you're just not really changing at times. So, thank you for that. Oh, there you are. Now you're moving around. What we wanted to do tonight in the time that we have with you is primarily five things. The one that's not listed on the agenda is next steps and just be really clear about like what's coming up leading up to the stakeholder session in February. So we'll get to that last, but we want to touch base quickly on what we heard at meeting number one and how we're seeing this project and give you all a chance to respond to that. We then want to talk about the findings from the audit, kind of at the highest level we can. So Rob's going to help us within the room not miss any important things, but also not get too far into the details because we're not going to solve everything at this meeting. But we want to know if we're moving in the right direction or where we're going astray and where you want to redirect us. And then the last two things that are of substance are really preparation for the stakeholder event in January to make sure we are all understanding the same emphasis for the meeting of what we want to both share and what we want to get out of the interaction with the stakeholders. So that's kind of an overview. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, so kind of jumping in then, I guess I'm going to try to facilitate through these. Mark and I prepared last week and then again today. And as questions come up or I've missed something of importance, he's going to jump in. Luckily, he's very comfortable doing that and I encouraged him. He will not be.
He's been doing it for years, Steve.
Exactly. But to try to keep it smooth through Teams, we're going to just do it that way. So basically, a couple of the things we wanted to share as highlights for us that we heard at meeting number one was that the planning board expressed a willingness really to start fresh on the zoning for a whole variety of reasons. That came across pretty clearly. It gave us, I think, a little bit of, it made us nervous because we want to make sure that both you can, you can deliver on your commitment to the grant and on the timeline that you have. So we want to try to walk that line between making sure we focus on the housing related aspects you've committed to. And if we can address additional things along the way, that's fine, but it's not likely to be a wholesale throwing out of the zoning and a fresh start completely in the now six months, let's say, that we have. And we just wanted to call that out at the beginning of the meeting and give the group a chance to respond to that or to shine some additional light as needed. Thoughts?
Let's get done as much as we possibly can.
Okay.
I'm not willing, I'm not willing to accept that approach.
Tell me more.
I feel like we would be possibly adapting some, some good changes to a flawed ordinance. I don't see how that's going to serve us best in the long, long term. And I really don't think starting fresh, it's really going to be that difficult. Now, I've never done this before, but I, just looking at what elements we need to put together here, it seems like most of the things we want to adjust would more or less stand on their own. So I, I think we'll know more once we get into it, but, but I'm not willing to concede that that's what we should try, try to do is to limit the zoning rewrite to a updated existing ordinance.
One clarification, or I guess one question for you, Tim. When you talk about that, are you talking about all articles within the zoning or are you focused on one section such as the districts and uses?
I think I'm talking about all articles. Now, now certainly, for example, I'm sure you folks could provide us with a list of common definition, which would be a good starting point so that our definitions are, and conform to what's generally considered to be the best way to describe these, these elements. That seems simple. The new districts that we're talking about are combined districts. They will require a bit of work. And then what's, what's left?
I mean, there's quite a bit out of this hundred page ordinance. There's actually quite a bit, and I would say this is more of like a minimum of a year's worth of work. It's not what's in our scope and contract is to do 100% rewrite of impact fee sections and wireless sections and severability clauses. There's a lot. So yes, we could probably, we can definitely help with definitions and we can try to push this as far as we can in a lot of areas, even if it's not housing related. But I think there has to be some kind of compromise. And Rob, I don't know if you want to share thoughts you shared with us on this.
Oh yeah, so I mean, as, as I've looked at it, obviously, I mean, we're under a little bit more time constraints than we would have been had we started back in May of last year. I was thinking things like the conservation district. I don't think there's anything we need to change about our conservation district. It very rarely has come up since I've been here. It's permanently, a lot of it's permanently concerned. I think what's in the language currently for that district is probably satisfactory. So there's one you can kind of set off to the side and start working on where we think we can really make more progress and more hay in, in, in this project. So that was one. I don't know. What do you guys think about commercial industrial? Another one that has not really been a problem for us. I think it's, I mean, maybe you change the boundary, but otherwise. So there's, there's two you can kind of set off. And I just, I'm, I'm worried. I think I would echo what Steve has said. Six months of time constraints. We really got to do what we got to do.
Should we talk about how to chunk it out and prioritize it in terms of which areas housing being first, but, or housing related zoning first and chunk out what areas are, that we know are bad, that we definitely need to address and see how far we get.
Yeah. Also, don't forget that the HOP contract and Steve's contract ends, I think, at the end of July. We have another six or seven months during which time we can try to work on the parts that Steve doesn't get to.
Or, or next year.
Or next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, it's not like we're never going to do them.
Right.
It's like we have constraints and, you know, we got drafted by our previous contractor and we've got to make the best of the time and the funds. And that's where we are.
Originally, I think that we thought that using a blank slate would have been easier than, than rewriting. And, and that's why we headed down that road is that, and, and we didn't want to not use best practices, right? We, we wanted to utilize the consultant's expertise in order to get the best we possibly could.
Yeah.
Having said that, everything's open for discussion or change.
I, I think, I think what Rob suggested could work, and if we do prioritize the sections, we'll see where we end up. What, at the end of July, what are we required to, to produce? A draft ordinance?
Yes, as far as the house goes. Sorry, it's the housing.
The, the housing.
The housing portion of the ordinance.
Right. So if we, let's just, not that we want to do this, but let's just say we come up with a draft ordinance and we decided that on March of 2014, we, we, we don't advance it to the town meeting. We don't have to pay the money back, right?
I don't think so.
There's no requirement that the town adopt the ordinance? And in fact, it could be defeated.
Correct. But that, which is why they can't make that a requirement.
Oh, right.
So I guess I would like to say I don't want to establish a self limited goal right now. I think we should just launch in and see where we get.
I think, I think we're comfortable with that, Tim. I just didn't want to, I want to make sure that if you saw this in July and there are sections that we haven't touched, that people aren't surprised by that. There may be sections that look wholesale different based on the feedback we get from you and the suggestions we make. We might take whole sections out and put a whole new section in. And you might even reformat all the districts, even if we don't change them to make them more user friendly and make other improvements. So we're definitely trying not to get out of doing work. We're just trying to be more realistic in what we can deliver to you and make sure that we exceed your expectations. So.
Very good.
And I'm guessing this is going to be a topic we're going to continue and feel free like to bring it up again. We'll probably bring it up again. Like, are we getting too detailed in one section? Have we left enough time for these other sections? But knowing that we have a stakeholder meeting in February and then we have public engagement in late April, early May, that's going to stop us from doing a lot of the more detailed work with you all until after that. And that's May to July is pretty short. So we have to be beat up with a lot of draft stuff, ready to kind of make adjustments based on what we learned from the public. It'll be a wild ride, but we'll get a lot of changes made. And then you can decide, as David said, which ones you want to bring forward or what other resources that we can point you to if you want to encourage the revision of additional definitions we didn't get to or other things we can help point you in those directions.
Okay. Good job, Steve.
All right. So the next thing we want to talk about was the draft audit report that we sent along last week. I guess a couple of things that we wanted to just note, and this may be a repeat for some of you from last meeting, but this was a key part of your grant application and our contract with the town. At the same time, we heard from some of you like, don't spend a lot of time doing an audit because we want a whole new zoning ordinance. So back to the previous conversation, knowing that we have to kind of walk the line between whole new sections and maybe some more targeted revisions. We still had to go through the exercise of doing the audit. It's how we learn a lot more about what you're seeing in the regulations and things that we're seeing that maybe you hadn't noticed. So it was valuable exercise. It was super helpful to have new master plan chapters to look at. So that first part is really us pulling direct text from the master plan so that we can understand what we see as kind of high level guidance from the master plan. At the end of the day, this is just a way that we're raising questions and starting to, Mark and I are starting to kind of share some ideas of what we're seeing and what we're not seeing. And what we wanted to do tonight is go through a couple of the sections and talk about, you know, what stuck out to you or some, if there are answers to some questions that really Rob can handle offline, we don't need to take them up tonight at the meeting. We can circle back to him after tonight. But just kind of frame it for you. And then based on the direction we get from you all tonight, we still want to look at the subdivision and site plan regs, but we wanted to kind of know areas that you're really interested in seeing changes made first. Is that fair, Mark? Did I miss anything?
Nope, that's perfect. Right on, Steve.
So any initial questions on the audit before we kind of jump in and touch on some of the sections?
Go for it.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Linda. All right. So as I said, the master plan stuff, I guess we just wanted to ask if there was anything here that we noted that you had questions on or that you disagreed with. Let's just pull the verbatim from the master plan chapters.
These, these sections actually were very helpful for us when we were looking at, you know, before we start looking at the zoning ordinance, just to give some background to the community and what's been going on and what people's feelings are. So it was actually very enlightening from, from myself.
They also seem to reinforce what we heard from many of you last, at the last meeting about the desire for expanding the residential opportunities, increasing density, focusing development in areas that have infrastructure and services as opposed to the more rural areas. It seemed like you're telling the same story, which is good. It's not always the case. We sometimes read the master plan and get told something very different. So your work, it seems like you're all on the same page. If you're not, let us know.
No, we are. It's, it's only been a year since we adopted this, so we're still on the same page.
It's good we're doing this now, then.
Exactly.
All right, then, under Article four, kind of the regulation of uses is the way, this would be page five of the audit. We just, we identified some work to be done going forward. One of the items Mark addressed at the last meeting is the workforce housing mandate by the state and the need to specifically address that within the ordinance. So that's just placing that as a to do in the future as we're making these revisions for you. We also saw the opportunity, and this is one of the places where we need some feedback to, instead of, to stay with listing the uses that are allowed, but to simplify the uses to make them much more general, and that would be both in the definitions and in the sections, but to simplify it for the user as opposed to trying to anticipate every possible kind of commercial use, et cetera. And then if that was popular, to, to create actual use in dimensional tables for each district. So it's clear what the uses are. You can even compare them across districts. One of the other things, this came from feedback from all of you and talking about the lot sizes that exist in the zoning, lot, minimum lot size requirements, is to really look at what's there and try to make the districts fit the neighborhoods. So we heard that we see the same need. You'll see when we get into talking about specific districts, we've even started to ask some questions about lot sizes.
I think that's accurate, but without having 35 districts.
Right. Definitely.
So that, that's, that's the challenge, I think.
Yeah. I think this is an example where starting from scratch is what we want. We don't want to start with the sizes and the districts that we have.
I agree.
Okay. Yeah.
So when we get to the next part, if we're talking about a district, I guess let's have a general discussion when we get to districts. So let's, yeah, we'll come back to that. We agree increasing the height limit in all districts makes sense. Was there a height limit that had been discussed internally?
Well, was it increasing the height or was it defining what the height is?
Yes.
Or how it's measured?
Both.
Was it both?
I believe so. It's both.
Yeah.
Because for, for the proposed possible new apartment complex, I think our current height limit is 32 and 35. And they needed to go a little bit higher. And what our fire chief said was at least on multi, new multifamily construction, it doesn't matter because if there's a big fire, they're going to bring in equipment from Lebanon and hand over which could handle it.
And it has, and it's sprinkled.
And they're sprinkled.
But I, I don't feel comfortable putting a townwide height, these trial limits or measurement based on one application that could easily get a variance or do it as a special exception if the structure is sprinkled, something to that effect. It's the residential, the single family homes, depending on where they're located, is if you go above 35 and someone starts building these mega homes, like on the Lake District, you're going to get a lot of people mad at you.
That's what I, I could see for that reason in the Lake District, maybe the definition of height limit is different than.
Right. Currently, where it's a blanket townwide.
Right.
Yeah. So I mean, I would.
I'm very comfortable with that.
Root four district is different than the rural district or the lake district.
And, and a sprinkle multifamily may have a different requirement, which is less.
Yes. Yeah.
So let me ask the consultants a question about heights. Is it predominantly a, a a measurement in heat? Or is there a, is there an option to, to define height as in stories of building? In other words, I did a, well, not in other words, but for, for example, I did a Google drive through of the, of the town, just looking at building heights. And the predominant height that we see is two and a half stories. So that's two full stories plus whatever you can carve out of the pitch of the roof. And, and there's variations on that. Occasionally, you'll see a, a three story building. It's pretty rare. Then you have stories that are below grade, which added to what's above grade can sometimes result in, in instead of a two and a half, a three and a half story building, if you counted that below grade story. So it seems like, no matter where you go in town, you see two and a half story buildings all over the place. And three stories is pretty much close to that. And so I'm wondering if we just defined that our, our max height is limited to say three stories or some number. Do we really care about the fact that some buildings have 10 foot ceiling heights and some have a, or 12 even?
I think, I think that's a good approach because it also pick your roof pitch, 12, 12, 9, 12.
Right. Doesn't.
Right. That, that doesn't make a difference.
Right.
Yeah, but it does make a couple of foot difference in the height of the building.
Right.
But it's not making, I mean, I like that approach, something like three stories above ground.
I had to change my pitch on my roof for that very reason.
Right, which is silly.
Which was silly.
Yeah.
So the question to consultants is, is that a is that fraught with legal problem, interpretation problems, so forth? Or is it a fairly simple thing to define? It's, it's clear what, what's intended.
Well, it's, yeah, I'd say in most cases, it's defined by a number. Okay? I've seen it measured in different ways, like the average height so that you take three or four measurements or, or more around a building. And that takes into consideration that example of a walkout basement that could be three stories on one side. You know, very, very tall, but if you look at it from the front, it's only two or two and a half. The, the, obviously, if you put on a lawyer hat, people will, with no limit at all of height number, that could create buildings that are, you know, you could have, that are out of context if someone really wants to get massive because it's three stories. Now, is that going to happen that often? Most likely not. You know, if someone built a huge barn in the middle of the woods, who cares? Of how tall it is. So I'd say that's not the norm, but that doesn't mean it, it's wrong. But just be, just be mindful that someone may take advantage of it and you're not going to like it.
Right.
Right, that's.
I can, I can build a, I can build a house that's actually one story, but 35 feet high because I'm going to have lofts.
Right.
Which are actually apartments, which are actually apartments. Well, that's what I mean.
Well, it's, but what if you're doing by story, there's no height limits. There's no number. It's no stacks.
Right. Steve, can I interrupt here for a second? I understood that you wanted this session to be kind of a high level view. And are we getting too much into the weeds?
A little bit, but is enough for us to look into both options for you. How's that?
Yep, that's, that's good. We, we, we hear what you're saying, so that's, that's fine.
Yeah. I would like to, I would like to conclude the discussion though, just with, we mentioned, it was mentioned earlier that if you need additional height, it should be available through some, you know, means in the, in the ordinance, meaning special exception.
Special exception.
Yeah, or.
As opposed to a variance.
As opposed to a variance because the variance puts, to me, too much power in the hands of very few people that sometimes are not motivated by getting housing in the town. That's what basically we're looking at right now with a potential application. And so I guess it's where it's appropriate, you know? I mean, is a, is a five story building appropriate in our village? Probably not. But like, like what Mark just said, is it out in the woods where nobody's going to see it? Why, what are we doing here? I mean, should we, should we make it possible that somebody could do that, I think? I mean, that's.
I think if we end up with a foot limitation.
Right.
Then we'll need that special exception provision, except I don't think the reason you cited is why we should do that. Because the nature of this board could change to one that's very anti-housing. And that makes, it's either the ZVA or us. So I, I, I would leave that reasoning out of the.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, we've, we've used variance as a zoning tool and that's not, that's not.
We're agreed.
As opposed to a housing.
Yeah.
That's all I'll say. Yeah.
Okay. All right. So in this, on page five, under general, there are some questions. We'll circle back to Rob. We don't need to spend time tonight, but one question for the group. In thinking about short-term rentals, we didn't talk about this at the first meeting, I don't believe. Knowing that you're increasing, you're looking to increase housing opportunities, knowing that you're allowing ADUs. Has there been a discussion about registering or regulating short-term rentals? There has?
Yes, that's coming probably within the next month.
Well, there's going to be a warrant article.
There will, there will be a warrant article on our ballot in March.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So we'll watch for that and then we'll hear from you if it doesn't go the way you want and you want to incorporate something, we can work on it.
Is that a select one initiative?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Correct. They went back and forth and the decision was that it would be a select board initiative, that that was the right avenue. And so we put together one. They just got the legal opinion on the draft. And so I believe at our next meeting, the revised draft will be there. Can we, can we stay at the high level?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not diving down too deep here. Just could, could we get a copy of that sent to us?
Yeah, I just got, I just got the most current copy today, as a matter of fact, from the lawyer.
Go to the meeting, too.
Great. Okay. All right. So I guess following David's helpful lead, if we were to float over the town for a minute at 30,000 feet together, the rest of, a lot of the rest of this audit goes district by district. And what we did was look at the existing districts. And I, I noted the, the comment a few minutes ago about potentially wanting to rethink the district. So I'd like to have that conversation at the outset. But just so you know, what we saw here is we tried to note where there was a clear purpose statement, where there wasn't. And it was a way for us to wrap our head around what your dimensional and use regulations by each district and kind of what you're trying to accomplish or what the previous, the previous town officials and voters were trying to accomplish. The tables. The tables we, we created, right? And that was just the way that my brain could start to look at what you're allowing in a district now on the left. And then if a district were to continue or a new district were to be created in its place, what we might propose on the right, so that we have something later on that it's not a huge leap for us to go back to the public in April or May and say, hey, you know, in this district, these are the standards now that you're used to. This is what we're thinking about and why, and allow them to give their feedback, ask questions, do all that. Um, doesn't mean that we're suggesting they be presented this way. I think we could actually do better than this as far as the final presentation of the information. Uh, but just wanted to give you some of that background. So in my notes, um, mine and Mark's notes are combined notes from last time. I had down that there are possible districts include Conservation, the Industrial District along eighty-nine, the Village District, um, a Lakes District, which would be new, and then a Rural District. And then we started getting into some possible overlay districts, the Shaker Village District, Enfield Center, uh, Eastman, some of these others. But just starting with the first five, I recognize that if we go to a rural district, we're taking rural one and rural three and rural five, and all of a sudden, a lot of them are sharing the same district regulations and I wanted to get a sense of the room if that will just explode and blow up and create a big mess, or if you think that could work.
I definitely think.
My, my opinion is that one, the, some of the boundaries might be redrawn around the village and, and then, yeah, I think it can work.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's to say, the Village District, I think, is what we're, we're, we're talking about here, is basically replacing R one.
Right.
Yeah.
District, although the boundaries be adjusted. And that the R three and R five are just gonna be combined.
Combined as one, as one district.
Yeah, that's, that's the thought.
Okay, I also listened after our conversation last time, that we forgot one thing. At our last town meeting, we did an overlay for Conservation Heritage District. And because that was just voted a year ago, we should absolutely keep that overlay.
Yeah.
As is.
Right. That the three buildings.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, there is a list in that.
Yeah.
Package that I gave you, if I, if I've got something along here, we should sort that out. I don't, did they get sent this wrong?
No, we're distributing them tonight.
I know, but did the consultants?
Oh, no, no, I can send it to them too. Um, yep.
So let me just quickly read.
Yes.
I think everyone forgot. So the Enfield Village District, socially replacing R one, it would also include anything we decided to do specifically for the Route four, corridor and Main Street, right?
Okay.
Yep. The Rural District, as we said, combine R three and five. The I eighty-nine Commercial Industrial District, which we may not ever even get to this time. Uh, Conservation District, which already exists and maybe we won't do much with that. Um, Lakeside or Waterfront or whatever we call it. And I think, I'm not sure we talked about this, but basically if it's a lake district, all of those regulations would be identical for each lake.
Yeah.
Probably waterfront.
That would be the goal.
The simplest thing to do.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, and the ocean, I mean, they're sharing a body of water.
Well, yeah, but you. Only to remember, you have some, some that are lake that are also on water and sewer. And they may have a different density based on water and sewer.
Yeah.
Although, just for full clarity, the lake water sewer is a different kind of water, uh, sewer, because we're forced main.
Right.
And we can't make them connect as we see. So maybe it would be gravity sewer. I don't know, it's something to discuss.
We just, we just leave it as, if you're on the lake, within his boundaries, where the boundary setback from the body of water is, however you wanted to find it, it's a lake district period.
Yeah.
Regardless of what you're connected to.
If you got the benefit of the town water sewer, then maybe that allows you, but that won't be necessarily defined in district.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
So, and then these others, um, this Eastman Village District, are you familiar with Eastman?
Yes, I am. I don't know if you are, Mark. Have you been there?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Okay, well, I, I think the general thinking was that it, it is almost a separate town.
Made up of three towns, right?
Yeah, overlapping three towns and that we would, uh, correct me if I got my words wrong here, but basically defer to whatever they wanna do down there and, and, and have our ordinance basically just allow that to happen.
That's exactly correct, because they have a homeowners association that takes care of pretty much everything.
And it's very strict.
I mean, I think for, for our own zoning, cause if that ever disappears, say, whatever, somehow it just gets dissolved. If we just take what's on the, what they have on the books today, and that gets cut and pasted into our zoning ordinance, and then with at least something on the books, protecting Enfield section.
Well, we can argue that point.
Right, that's.
That's, but it's a good, it's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it won't change anything today. It's just in the future, if something should happen.
Um, it's also less than twenty-five lots that are in Enfield.
Okay. The Shaker Village District, um, are you folks familiar with Shaker Village?
I've been through it, but I can't really picture it. We can take a closer look.
Okay, if, Rob will send you some, some, uh, descriptions that I wrote of that, that might be helpful to kind of frame it in your mind, that's why we thought perhaps it could be a separate district. There, there's a lot of different.
Overlay.
Um, interests there, I guess, that should be taken into consideration. And then we had a big question mark about, well, for similar reasons, was the Lakeview condo area perhaps another
overlay.
Overlay district. And we talked about Enfield Center also, which is right smack dab in the middle of the Rural District, but it is a village and is a little bit different than the Rural. And then as Eric pointed out, we got a couple of historic overlay districts that will just automatically include, I think. That, that was the list, as far as I know.
Great. All right, um, Mark, I wonder if we should go through and ask a couple of questions about the, the new districts, the kind of redrawn Village District, the combined R three, five. And then for the next meeting, come back to you all with kind of a sketch of the standards that we think we're hearing and some questions about things like dimensional setbacks and other stuff. And we can start to refine these as we go. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, yes.
We're also gonna wanna craft purpose statements for these, um, and I know there's some information in your land use chapter. We can try to tease out what we see as the purpose and agree on the details before we try to craft a statement. Does that seem like a good way to proceed?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, you guys are great. All right, so now, hard questions, um. What do we do about lot size for this redrawn village area? Um, I know there was a discussion of kind of tossing out a little amount of lot size and I'm okay with that. Do we still wanna pursue that as an idea, as the area has now taken over part of like R one and Route four, or do we need to think about something more sophisticated?
I'll jump at once.
Well, I, I think there's a big difference, if we're saying the Village District is now all of the R one district.
Yeah, well, I.
There's a big difference between the Village District that's downtown and the R one district.
Yeah, yeah, I see, well.
We do need to be careful about.
Right, because you're, you, if in, in your mind, you're thinking the current R one boundary has the boundary line, then yeah, that's a problem.
Right.
But if the Village District boundary line is the, is closer to what the actual village is, plus a little bit of room to grow, that's difference than just saying, just saying R one now becomes village.
Well, no, I'm just, that's why I'm asking the question, is because at, I'll use my house. I'm, I'm in an R one district on Shaky Hill Road. Am I in the Village District now?
Probably not.
Probably not. I'm on town water, but not town sewer.
So then I would say probably yes.
Well.
Right. And it only goes as far as the West Coast.
Right.
The water does.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know where your house is. So, um, so to correct what we talked about, the Rural District being R three and R five, it's also includes whatever's left over from R one.
R one, right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe.
So I, I would draw, suggest drawing a line where if you have water and sewer and, cause the sewer is the, actually the more important one.
And that's the village.
Right. Well, then that is where your lot size really doesn't matter. Because you don't need. You, using Dan as an example, his lot size does matter, cause he has to have a sewer, cause there's no sewer there. However, if sewer were to run out there.
Then it would.
Then it wouldn't.
Right.
And so I, I'd suggest that we draw, you know, conceptually around the water and sewer both.
Right.
And if you're hooked up to sewer, your lot size is mostly based on your road frontage.
Right.
Maybe you'd have to have fifty feet of road frontage or something.
Yeah. Unless you're in the Lake District.
We, we can talk about that, but, but there's not many, well, those lots are already that small.
Yeah.
No, I mean, of course.
Well, you're right, that, 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 that's something to think about, but.
Well, you can rule it as that, you know, if the lot is connected, is connected to sewer, which in a, in a future, uh, future date, then the minimum lot size goes away.
Right.
But I don't see the town running sewer anyplace in the next ten, fifteen years.
No, but I could see.
But.
An individual group of homeowners saying this is advantageous to us.
Okay, if the lot is, is connected to sewer, then your minimum lot size disappears.
Right.
But up until that point.
Right.
It's gonna be a set acreage or footage or whatever.
So then what determines the minimum lot size in the Village District if you're not on town sewer?
State requirement?
State, state-approved septic system.
DES standards, soil-based standards.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Or we could use that definition for the lakes, but then also then, just whatever, the DES, the soil-based minimum.
And if there's, if there's town water, that's gonna allow, you know, if this, depending on the soils, obviously, will allow the lot to be, um, you know, will be under an acre, if the soils are good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I do think we wanna consider a, a road frontage requirement though for driveways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And practical nature, which would also place a limit on the lake frontage if you had to have so much road frontage.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Something smaller than the seventy-five feet though.
Yeah.
Yeah. A lot.
So fifty foot by a hundred foot is a pretty standard lot in a lot of cities at an eighth of an acre.
Yep.
All right, that was good. Like, I appreciate you guys jumping into that. I know it was a big question and it doesn't mean you can't change your minds and we can't refine from here, but it starts to give us some parameters and we can look at how to break it out. Does that make sense?
Yep, absolutely.
Mark, did that raise questions for you related to the village specifically?
No, I mean, obviously, you know, we need to take a, a, a stronger drive around the community just to familiarize ourselves. But, you know, just looking at the zoning map, there's plenty of neighborhoods that are really tight, um, smaller lots that look like they should be more village-like than, you know, one acre zone. It's actually one of the comments, comments further down in, in our outline. So, no, it, it makes sense.
So let me, let me raise a related issue and that is, um, we, we've gotten into, well, let me rephrase that. Um, how many buildings do we, do we limit or do we care to have a limit on, um, in the Village District, town water and sewer? Well, whether it's town water or sewer or not, you're in the Village District, do we care how many buildings are put on one lot? And I'm not, not necessarily talking about principal buildings, but buildings.
I don't.
It, it shouldn't matter. I, I agree, I don't care. I think what we care about is storm runoff.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Right. Stormwater, yeah. Cause I'll give you, I'll give you a, just an out there and it's not anything we have now. If I've got a twenty-five acre lot, in the water and sewer, I can put a hundred units. I wanna put six units per building. Presently, I would have to subdivide it into eighteen lots with over a quarter of a mile of road frontage.
That's not good.
Hmm, that's not good.
No.
Yeah. That's not good.
Yeah, I, I think the stormwater management is.
It's, is exactly.
Difficult but critical piece that.
Right.
To a large extent, that's what we care about.
And that's one of the self-limiting.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Elements and.
It's like this, it's like the septic isn't self-limiting.
And what about setbacks? Would you still have setbacks?
Well, yes, I think we should, but I don't know what they should be.
Right.
I mean, between buildings is typically the, the set, I mean, obviously you can have zoning that dictate distance between buildings, but the fire code, um,
Right.
gets involved with that too, depending on what type of the, what the use is, the use groups, um, sprinkled, not sprinkled. Um, so that's gonna come into play. Um, but, you know, depending on the context, you know, having buildings ten feet apart, um, you know, we're, we're working in Bedford right now, they're talking about going with a cottage-like design program um, for, for, for residential and, you know, those homes are ten feet apart in that type of, uh, environment. So, um, it's, um, it shouldn't be limited, to be flexible.
One of the things that's gonna be helpful too, and maybe this is something we do someday when Mark and I are there in person, or you guys do it as planning board members, but um, some of your properties or properties of folks you know in town, getting some measurements to say, you know, this many houses on the street or have a five-foot setback. You know, and that's just the reality of what we're looking at. What, is there any reason we, we shouldn't do that? But we've found, and being able to talk to the public about what exists out there, cause often we don't know, we all picture different things, that could be helpful. Um, and then if you haven't thought like the fire code or something else, maybe it becomes a round issue, but it might help you sell any changes.
Rob, is, is that a data set that was developed for the master plan? It, it kinda rings a bell that Randy did a, an analysis of existing conditions. Do you recall?
Possibly, I can look, I can look around.
Can, can you look? Cause I don't think it would be good to, to have to redo it.
Was that the build-out analysis?
It, I, I, it might have been included in that. I, I honestly, I don't remember, but it, I do remember she, she was, had done or was going to do, um, kind of a, a survey of the existing.
Yeah.
By, by lot, what's on the ground?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, I don't remember that.
Maybe I'm making it.
No, are you, are you probably?
Well, let me ask a quick procedural question. Um, if three or four of us, three of us wanted to take a little drive around to make some notes, a survey if you will, uh, is that okay?
I, I, that would save you guys a lot of work, wouldn't it?
That would, that would be a planning board meeting and it should be public.
Not, not if there's three.
Three or less, you're all right.
Less.
You can't have a forum.
Right. And you can't stop, you can't stop three people from going out on the street and doing it. Bring it back.
You could have two teams, three, as long as they didn't share the same car.
Right, yeah.
Or stop at the same place at the same time.
Right.
Um, I mean, that might be kind of interesting. That, in fact, that was exactly what, I was by myself, but when I did that building height survey and I took some photos, I didn't take photos of the buildings while I was there, I got them off of Google, but um, um, there's a lot to learn.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
By doing that.
The other thing you find is like in the downtown area, there's conformity in the setbacks. People built the houses and the one that built it next to them built it the same. People built the houses and the one that built it next to them built it the same.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Setback from the houses, you get conformity. Because conformity is even better than having, you gotta do twenty feet and you gotta do, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that information would be really helpful when we do write setback requirements.
Right.
At least from the road frontage, because the fire codes don't come into play there.
Right.
Between houses, fire codes are gonna dictate.
Right.
The closeness and some of those down there currently probably are under the fire code right now.
Oh, yeah.
Probably, but, you know, their grandfather.
Yeah. They're on, right.
They'll all burn down.
It sounds like we're, we, we want the setbacks to be flexible.
Yeah.
Well.
Well.
Well, flexible, yes.
To account for the factors that should be accounted, that they've missed.
Oh, you write them to what's on the ground.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, you know, you may have outliers because somebody built their house closer or, or, or back, but you know, you, you do a survey.
Right.
You figure out what the average or majority of the houses. On a particular street or a particular section of town and you say. This is what we have. This is our setback. So if anybody builds a new house. It conforms with all of the rest of the houses.
Well, but when I want to put my detached ADU in. And now I'm, I'm, uh, I'm different than my four neighbors around me. That I've got now a, a new building that's within a fire code setback minimum of my neighbor. That's a little different.
Are you talking a front setback or a, a side or rear?
Probably a side or rear.
Uh, we're talking about front only, I think, at this juncture.
Oh, setback from the street.
Yes, right. We, we probably won't be flexible on sides. They may not be all the same, but we're not gonna be flexible sides, because you're only talking about new buildings.
Unless you're talking the lake district.
Well, why don't you talk, well.
If you can, if you could just look at the side setbacks while you're out there, it would be helpful, because that question will be following shortly, so. Uh, but that would be really great if you could do some fieldwork like that, even, and if there are places that you think are worth visiting, it'll narrow down. If Mark and, or I are there, you know, where we go with one of you or Rob. That'd be great.
Okay, I, I, can I just, um, raise a point on the previous topic of, um, multiple. Principal bill, or multiple buildings on the single lots, um, concepts. To, I, I'm okay with it, it's, with to a limit. It's a more, a matter of what the building is used for. If it's an apartment complex and there's two apartment, two structures that are both apartment complexes. With multiple units in them, it's sort, that's, and it's all under one ownership. That's one thing to me, into my mind. It's like a PUD or P U R D type of setting. But you have two separate family homes, individual homes, and they're sitting on the same lots. Then I'm, I'm starting to have concerns.
I mean, that would be covered under a condominium development though, and that, you see that all over the place where it's one piece of property. But everyone has, you know, the one that condominium comes in before you. Uh, most likely those individual homes will be on a separate, um, not a deeded lot. But a limited common area, which will be around their home. Um, and that's very, that's not unusual, um. You know, it's, it's typical condominium style development and it's, um, not out of the ordinary at all.
I guess it's ways, way structured then.
Yeah.
Uh, so what's, what's your concern? Well, if it's just taking a single lots, five acre lots. And putting five individual homes on that lots. And they're all. Just, uh, from a tax purpose, uh, because each lot is, individual lot is taxed at a, its own rates.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, we ran into, run into problems if one of the homes is sold. I don't know, I just.
That'd be, that's a condominium though. I mean, that's, that's all that is.
Still, there's a condominium, but if it's, so, okay, well, that's, I treat, you understand condominiums are different.
That's not a zoning or planning problem.
Yeah.
It's a condo problem.
It's a condo problem. It's like if I, it's like, it's like having a duplex with two owners on it. It's not our problem. And we can't fix every problem in the world.
Yeah.
And the, 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 the mortgage industry is not gonna.
Well, 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 it's, well, I guess everybody was done without a mortgage, you know, cash buyer.
They don't care.
We, 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 we can't anticipate every possible situation. We don't regulate interactions between people.
That's right. Civil issues are not ours.
I have a follow-on question.
Yeah.
We talked about maybe that we wanna have, we don't care how many buildings you put on your lot, subject to all the.
Yeah.
You know, the, the physical characteristics that, that limit that, but. Do we care about how many housing units are in a particular building?
If it's on water and sewer, no. If it's on, not on water and sewer, then there's a limitation imposed by the characteristics of the land.
And the soil.
And so.
Yeah, I completely agree with that.
Right.
We, we touched upon that further in our outline where, you know, depending on context. You know, if you want a garden-style building, which is more massive, that has twenty-four units than it, could have thirty-six units than it, three stories. One big block. Um, that type of style is appropriate in specific areas. It may not be appropriate everywhere. Um, and as you move out of the village, you know, maybe still allow multifamily, but you can't have garden buildings, but you can have townhomes. Um, which is sort of a, a, a mix between a single family, um, it more, townhomes provide multifamily setting. Uh, for density, uh, but it's, you know, from a context standpoint, it's certainly not as large and. Um, maybe massive as a garden building, so. Um, I, I think it's depending on where in the community, um, you can achieve both things, allow higher density, but. Keep context in it as well.
Well, it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. Of course, we're talking about the village district here, right? So, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, if it's okay with the board, I think we spent an hour on the audit and the direction on the zones. And I think we have enough to work on bringing you some, going beyond the audit and starting to bring you some structure for the next meeting in February. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes.
What would be good is to talk about how we want to use the stakeholder meeting in February that you're advertising. Um, and I'm happy to share with you what we think and then tell me where we get it right, where we get it right or where we're missing an opportunity. Um, but in general, what Mark and I thought is we don't want to get too far ahead of the stakeholders. That we may want to take a step back from the conversations you've already had. Introduce, introduce the project, introduce the hop grant, introduce as, as an extension of Rob and all of you. And then let people know that we're using the master plan to try to understand how to make regulatory changes. Um, we may not want to share a lot about what we're talking about changing, like whole new zoning districts and other things. Just, we don't want to bog down conversation. I'm seeing heads nod, so it seems like that's right. Um, what we're, what we were thinking about when we talked again today was really trying to give them a chance after kind of a brief presentation. Twenty, twenty-five minutes, really just hear from them and we can have some question prompts about. Their awareness of regulatory barriers to development. It could be residential, it could be commercial. Um, their awareness of specific issues and opportunities in infield. Does that make sense?
I think you're spot on.
Okay. Thank God, I didn't have a plan B, so that's good.
It would be very, very helpful to have unvarnished comments from people, um, without being tainted by our ideas. That we're bringing in. I'd rather hear what people's thoughts are today based on what's out there. You know, we've heard from the board, but you know, the more people you hear from, you have different perspectives, so it'd be great to, to say, all right, well, what? What have you seen? What's, what's been your problem? What's been your area? We could be missing things and, and, uh, I think that it's gonna help us very, very much.
Yes.
Yeah.
Before we go and save the dates.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, great.
Um, I guess to that point, if the stakeholders that were to show up, say, I don't see a problem. Um, zoning works great. We don't need any more housing units. Will there be some of you there to ask the question or to share your own opinions?
I think so.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Does that make you have a lively discussion? There may need to be some education that happens during the meeting and that's fine too. Um, so it can be a given take. It doesn't have to just be us receiving information from them. Um, so we'll be prepared to answer questions and have a broader discussion with them. Okay. Um, wow, that was easier than anticipated. So what I think we'll be able to do is when we meet with you, are we gonna meet on the twenty-eighth this way? Is that your, that's your next meeting with us, February twenty-eighth?
Uh, you guys are gonna have at least three applications on the twenty-eighth. We've got major site plan for both town things and I think there's one more coming, so.
Um.
So the fourteenth is probably a lighter meeting for you for, for work.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna be doing applications in this.
Yeah.
The timelines just.
Are, are you guys flexible enough to meet with us on the fourteenth of February?
Instead of the.
Instead of the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty.
I'm not, so I'm not, I'm gonna be away at another meeting. What we could do instead then is put together just an agenda for the twenty-ninth. And some question prompts and get them to Rob, and then that would give you two meetings to look at them. And if you want to provide any feedback that way, would that work?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Cause it's, it's actually not much that we need to do, um. But I guess the missing piece would be going over the, the draft districts. Um. So, yeah, let's think about that when we're gonna talk about those drafts, if you're not available on the twenty-eighth.
We just got, we've got a bunch of, uh, site plan review. Can we move those to the board team?
No.
Can we move those to the first meeting in March?
Which is when, that's gonna be the second week of March.
Yeah, second Wednesday.
The thirteenth.
Well, now, we're talking about moving our hearings.
Oh, I see.
All right, thank you.
Two of them are the town.
Two of them are the town, so I, I would talk to Ed tomorrow and see if that's okay with him.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the other one is, is a pretty simple one that.
Okay.
I think we're gonna have, so yeah, we could.
Then.
We could free up.
The twenty-eighth.
Based on the twenty-eighth that you guys come see us. And not have, uh, right, regular, uh, hearings and stuff.
If you can just, like, Rob, if you can verify that that works out, that'd be awesome. That'd be great.
On that, tomorrow morning, first thing.
And Rob. Uh, the two town applications. Could be done after we talk with these guys, right? Even if it was late in the evening.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Because it's just, you're just gonna be representing the town.
Town, yeah.
Yeah.
But they are major, I mean, they're major site plans, so I mean, I, I don't know.
They're, they're gonna take time to.
We're gonna be notifying all the butters and could be twenty-five people. It's Whitney Hall and the Public Safety.
We're just now getting around the.
And they're building.
Better late than never.
Well, literally, they haven't mailed the final design on public safety yet, so.
Right.
Can't show you something that's not fully designed.
And part two is they don't have to legally show up here if they don't want.
They're doing it as a courtesy.
Surprise, you know.
Well, I mean.
Well.
You just signed the contract.
We'll do it, so.
If it helps, if it helps, if it helps on that one, we can try to keep our part to an hour like we did tonight, um, if you want to proceed, so.
Yeah.
Happy to be flexible. Um. One of the things we're gonna want to do probably after that February meeting, and maybe this is something you can help us with, Rob, and if not, we can get Zach from our office involved. But start to sketch out where these boundaries might be, so you have a chance to look at them and think about it. Then they can evolve over time, of course, but, um, we're gonna want to start doing that. Tim?
I have a question on that. Um, so we, we've talked about the two different ways, at least we think. This could be done, boundaries could be done. One is that you. You incorporate an entire lot within a boundary. You try not to split it into two separate. Districts. And the other is that it's based on some linear foot from a road center line or something like that, which is, well, I think currently.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
We have lots that are in, in two different districts right now.
We do.
We certainly do.
Yeah.
I have one.
She has one.
Okay.
The car wash with Jakes is in two districts.
So I'm, um, I'm inclined to want work towards eliminating that arbitrary distance. And stick to the lot line boundaries. Uh, there, we pointed reasons why that might be problematic, but.
Yeah.
What do the rest of you think? I mean, in general, to give these guys some, some guidance.
Well, I, I'd rather have them, uh, tell us what they think is the best way to do it.
I think it, it may end up being a combination of things based on what I heard tonight. If you're talking about distance from the shoreline for the lake district, that might be hard to do. The properties, but in other areas, as you adjust the village district, following boundaries of properties might be pretty clear. Um, so we'll keep it in mind. Do you have thoughts on that, Mark?
It's, um, when the lots are small, it's easier to do when you have a hundred acre lot. And, you know, the front's commercial, do you really want a hundred acre commercial? Is it appropriate to have a hundred acres of commercial? Um, I get the point, uh, especially if you're a home, a, a lot owner, property owner. Um, it's, again, uh, it's context-based. Um, it's easier to do, I can see easier to do in the village as you get closer, uh, to more urban-like environment. It's easier to do it. As you get further out, it gets more challenging. It gets really wonky.
Speaking from experience here, um, I've seen it in a couple of different cases. Where the zoning board has offered the variance for a back part of the property that's outside of a zoning district to be able to do that use. Um, the one thing that I kind of fall down on is, uh, I don't like using a road as the boundary. So that on one side of the street, you can do one thing, but on the other side of the street, you can't.
Very challenging, Rob.
That is dumb to me, so we, yeah, we granted a variance in that case too. Because if you can do it on one side of the street, why can't you do it on the other? So.
Right.
I, I, I guess I come down as probably being the, the distance, because I mean, the, the lot boundaries are gonna change. I mean, people can subdivide and change boundaries if we have our distance of three hundred feet or whatever it is. I mean, we talked about our shorelands or lakefront being in sort of conjunction with the shoreline's protection, two hundred and fifty feet. That's probably a good number because it's, it's very much the D E S regs as well, so. Something to think about.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, before we, these guys go tonight, we had that original question, Tim and I. And regarding the number of principal buildings in the R one and all that.
That's resolved. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, I.
It's resolved with the new rewrite. It's not resolved today.
Well, okay, oh, well, the new rewrite will be resolved, will be resolved.
Right.
Yeah.
Been told that our interpretation will be an issue, so, uh.
So they're gonna go.
Do about it.
They're gonna go.
Based on Rob's direction.
Yeah, great. I guess the only other thing we had for you, because you already hit one of our next steps in talking about the meetings next month. Um, just, I guess, a prompt or a plea, uh, for recruiting for the stakeholder meeting on the twenty-ninth, we will be there in person. Um, I know Rob's put out save the date. Anything that any of you can do to get folks there that are on that list would be awesome. Uh, just so that we have a good group that can really kind of both back you up and inform this process.
Right.
Tell people we're getting rid of zoning.
Is this a town wise?
No.
Stakeholders.
It's stakeholders.
Yeah.
We identify. Selective individuals. Who are key players.
It's like.
Like real estate agents. And about thirty-five people.
There's a masking is.
Yeah, it's, it's the first step for them to get educated.
Yeah, but who is, okay, so you're saying, but stakeholder is this town, is a stakeholder?
No, Rob, Rob, Rob has a specific list.
We gave him.
Yeah, okay.
Same lesson.
That'd be great. Thank you all for doing that.
Great, all right.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll keep working.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Bye.
Linda, where are you?
Right here.
Right here.
Oh, you are in Enfield. Are you in Enfield or are you in Florida?
She's in Florida. Cause it's the law.
Don't you recognize the picture?
Yeah.
That looks like Florida to me.
Yeah.
I see the palm trees.
There aren't any palm trees there, but hey, it's been like forty one degrees with a high of forty four.
I know. Aguanas are falling out of trees.
I haven't turned the heat on.
We're gonna be in, in the forties later this week too.
Yeah, I saw the gators frozen in the ice, did you see that? They actually could survive.
Okay, um, let's, let's continue with the meeting here because we only have another forty minutes and I think we have a fair amount. To cover, um. I wanna thank. Tim for putting this document together, it's a really good summary of things that we've talked about. But I wanna reiterate the point that Steve and Mark made. Is that. We've got some ideas, none of them are cast in stone, and for this examining rewrite project to work. It has to have. The appearance. Of coming from the public.
Yeah.
So please, you know, don't spread this thing around, keep it as an internal document, even though, you know, it is. Public record at this point. And, um. It's, it's not cast in stone.
Right.
It's, it's for us.
I'm sure we're gonna learn through the stakeholders and then, uh, yeah, threats or whatever we call them later, I'm sure there'll be stuff that we didn't think of.
Absolutely, and again, like with the master plan, the key is. The public is coming to us, we can certainly try to guide the discussion. But if we want buy-in, it's gotta be from the public. Not top-down from us. Um, so getting back to the agenda, um, let's see, we've already called the meeting to order. Nobody from the public is here to comment on anything. Uh, no hearings, no conceptuals, Eric, select board report, please.
Sure, um, so we've had two meetings since our last meeting. Um, let's see, what are the highlights? Think the, uh, the biggest thing is the Whitney Hall project is underway. At groundbreaking last week, and they've taken apart a lot of the interior already. And the public safety building plans are being finalized. Um, the rental ordinance very much will be up next time, we got the legal opinion back, uh, actually, no, we did not quite get it back on Johnston Drive, but. They communicated they're almost done with that. And then we had a big strategic planning. Session at our last meeting, along with a town warrant review, uh, to get that started. And, and then the TIF committee met, which is, there, there should be an article on the warrant as well for. A new TIF plan. Which will. Include new projects, including. Uh, the, the biggest one that would happen shortly would be the plane. A floodplain study, so that we can understand what the potential problems and solutions are for report.
Any questions for Eric? Uh, my turn, legislative report. Things are starting to get busy for me down in Concord. As you know, I'm on the municipal and county government committee, which deals with a lot of. Land use issues, um. Today we had what's called executive session where we decide. Whether bills are gonna be released to the full house for deliberation and possible passage. Or whether they die in committee or whatever. The first one that was killed. Was a bill that would allow towns or town zoning boards. To be exempt from the requirement of publishing their warnings in a local newspaper. Um, the reason that was killed. Uh, and I think I have to take credit for. Having that happen was because, um. A lot of papers, newspapers depend on their ad revenue from the public legal advertising. And. You know, newspapers are on pretty shaky ground to begin with. Some of them have figured out how to successfully, um. Transition to a digital model. But there's still a lot of people who read a hard copy paper. And the group as a whole felt that. It was in the overall interest of the public good to maintain a strong and healthy, uh. Press. And. That's kinda why we decided to kill this, because. You start with zoning boards, Z B A, then you get all land use boards, and maybe the year after. Somebody introduces a bill that all public hearings. Only need to be done on a website, so that's where that is. Um, there was another bill requiring all towns to. Live stream and have available a video archive of all meetings and hearings. That was, um. Referred to, uh, interim study, which essentially means it needs more work. Uh, the final thing that we killed was a requirement, a bill that would have required. Solar canopies on all parking lots above a certain size. Um, so that was that. Uh, of more interest to this board were hearings that we had today. Um, one was to eliminate zoning restrictions on. Non-familial tenants in a rental housing situation. Um. Basically, I think this is a problem in the town of Durham. Where the town doesn't like all of the college students renting a house and living together. So. Because there's a housing crunch and you can put. You know. Two or three or four people into a house. The restriction that they currently have, which is not more than three unrelated people. Um. There's, there's a move to, um. Make that kind of restriction in zoning illegal. Um, another bill. Would disallow restrictions that do not. Directly conserve and promote the health, safety and general welfare. It would prohibit regulation of housing types, sizes. Building to, building types, energy, water, septic and, and septic technologies. There's a period there somewhere. Um. Yeah, basically, it says that, um. Different innovative technologies that meet federal and or state standards. Could not be zoned out. Um, for reasons other than, uh. This, this, the health and safety of the inhabitants or other community residents.
What's an example of that?
Um.
I'm in trouble following that.
Okay. I will say, I am not sure.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds like a bro to table.
No, ne- next, next time, so, some of these bills are not written. Explicitly. Coherently.
Yeah.
Yeah, this might have been one of them. Uh, the final one, which I think is of interest to us here in Enfield. Uh, is enabling legislation which would enable the creation of. What are called village districts. Which would be for the protection and remediation of surface water quality. And that could be single town, multi-town, um. And they could set up their own rules on what they do, how they finance themselves. But the goal is to manage the watersheds to protect the water quality. And I see that as a benefit. In our town and. We had a lot of testimony this afternoon from various, uh, lake associations and water quality people. So. That's basically it on what municipal and, uh, county government is up to. Um, starting next month, bills will actually go before the full legislature and I'll be able to report. Uh, ones of interest that either pass or fail. So that's my report, any questions? Rob, you wanna give your report?
Yes, uh, let's see, so I was. Thinking maybe we would have heard yesterday from the Therby Farms people for their variance or their zoning applications. They did not file, so they're gonna be at the earliest in March now, cause the, yesterday was the deadline. For the February meeting.
Does it still look positive that they're gonna do it?
Yeah, yeah, last communication I had that they were working on it.
Are they nervous about the fact that they have to get a, um, they have to go before the C B A?
I don't think so.
Okay, how about D O T?
D O T, that's one that they seem very confident of because they have a history there that they've already. That the project in one form or fashion has been approved twice. Uh, back when it was originally proposed, it was gonna be single-family homes on individual lots. And then it was, uh, then there was another iteration of it with multifamily apartments. And each time they sort of got to a point where it was getting. Close, the economy went to hell. You know, literally, both of them. Uh, were major recession downturns, like the housing crisis of two thousand and eight was, was the last big one. So they seem very confident, they've got a really good firm that does the traffic analysis and all that stuff. Um, and so. It's, it's in a spot in town that's a little bit easier to work with because it's not as high a density of housing around it. Like the one that we were talking about on, uh, further down Route Four. There's, there's a lot of houses there, there's not a lot of room to work with, so. Uh, when you say, I'll keep you guys posted on that. Um, you guys will be hearing very soon from an applicant on, in the R three down Shaker Hill. He applied for and got variance to subdivide at a smaller size than three acres. It's basically undoing a, um. Subdivision that was done, or actually, it was a, uh. Lots, boundary line adjustment. So, uh, you'll be hearing from him, he's Chris Rollins representing. I think he'll be filing for the next meeting, that will be one that I don't think we can put off, we're gonna have to. Have to have that one, uh, um, at that twenty eighth meeting, your twenty eighth meeting.
What's the address?
Yeah, it's way down at the end, headed towards Enfield Center, so if you go down, you know where you stop to, um. Uh, turn onto, it's basically Crystal Lake, uh, yeah, it's Crystal Lake Road.
Yeah.
Right on the right, there's an old farmhouse there and a bunch of fields.
Yeah.
It's that property right there. Be returning it to its pre, um.
They subdivided it because they wanted to have a one acre lot and now he wants to put it back together?
Well, he had a one acre lot.
That's what I mean.
Right, and they got rid of it, now they want it back.
They wanna put.
Uh, and he got, he got the variance from the C B A, which I will obviously include in any, uh. Information, we did, I did get information from Chris Rollins today, so the application will be timely. For, uh, your twenty eighth meeting. Um, the owner of Tardif Hall, do you guys know where that is? That's right behind the great stone dwelling. It was a multi-use commercial space where Dick Drummond's bicycle, uh, business is. Uh, Defiance Electric is, and it used to be a business, pretty good sized business, fifty or sixty employees called R C S. Retail Control Systems, uh, guy named Dave Albert, he moved that business to Colorado and it changed hands and. Uh, they're gone, and so, uh, the, uh, current owner Jay Boucher, who's the guy that owns Defiance. Has come in to talk about a residential use in there, so I've seen some designs there. Possibly four apartments, it's, it's a beautiful building, it's one of the old Shaker buildings, it's in really good shape, it was, you know. Well, uh, you know. Uh, preserved back when they turned it into a commercial space. Um, so, um, I've, you know, advised them, they're working with an engineer. Uh, they have an architect. Uh, it's major site plan because it's establishing residential use where no residential use exists in that spot.
Mm-hmm.
Um. That'll be interesting. Um. Jim Keller, so you've seen the construction is happening down there, Liam was down there yesterday inspecting. Uh, they're doing interior work, a lot of, uh, I think Jamie Martin's in there doing a lot of plumbing. Right now, they're digging in the, in the, uh, stone in the slab to get pipes and stuff installed.
I'm pretty sure I have memory on that, was it six units or five?
Six.
Six, okay.
And there are three downstairs, three upstairs.
And they're all one bedroom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Remember, he had originally hoped to do, uh, first floor parking.
Yeah.
You know, garages. State wouldn't get them, uh, give them like what they call a continuous curb cut. So instead he did parking on the one end there towards, um. Uh, what's his name, um, Holmquist. So, uh, let's see what else. It's been fairly busy, I mean, obviously, we're, we're getting ready to try to put our town report. To bed, so basically send it off to the printers, so Elise has been working on final language for the warrant, uh. TIF is one of the things we're working on to get that ready. We do think that we're gonna be needing to do a TIF hearing sometime in February. As the enabling legislation dictates. Um, but it's a new plan with some new projects, as Eric said, and feeling good about, um. Budget is still a little bit variable here, we're, we're coming close, I guess there's another meeting tomorrow night. Uh. These guys have been busy here, they're, they're out right now, you probably just saw them, and I put some salt out so you guys wouldn't fall, cause when I came back from getting some supper. It was icy, it was really icy right here on the ground.
It'd be bad when we leave, you'd be careful.
Yeah, your car is probably gonna be.
I think so, that was pretty good though.
Be careful, Linda, when you step out.
Yeah, be careful, Linda, we wouldn't want you to slip on the ice.
Alright. Don't get hit in the head with an iguana, though.
And don't slip on the salt water either.
Yes, question, go ahead.
Uh, since you, you were bringing up the, uh, project on Main Street, what is the status of the old laundry mats?
That's Brian, uh, guy named Brian Deckman, he was on our zoning.
Yeah, he's been in multiple times over the last five years.
Yeah.
But nothing's, occasionally.
I, I, I talked, I talked to him probably sometime in November. And, uh, if you've ever been by during the day, he has an occasional pop-up. Um, coffee emporium. And, you know, there, there's, he's still fixing it up and he's using it as an office. But I, I think his goal is to eventually open it as a coffee shop bakery, that kind of thing.
Yeah, that was the last hearing that I recall, something to that effect, and. I mean, when I go by on the rail trail or something, it's like, well, it looks like something might have happened here in the last six months.
Yeah, it's.
So it was like, yeah, we're just.
It's not moving, yeah.
Not moving quickly, but it is moving in, in the right direction.
I was just curious if there was another. Some other projects being planned for that thing, or.
If, if you see his Jeep there. Go on in, it might give you a cup of coffee. He's not charging at this point.
All your attention to those two dates, I don't know, the marker wasn't very bold, but, uh. Uh, Monday next week is the kickoff for the Master Planning Task Force. Which are welcome, everybody's welcome to come to, we have, uh. We have four of the five, uh. Committees slash commissions lined up for meetings in February, uh, where the contractor, Steve Whitman's, uh. He's got.
Liz.
Liz, Liz, yeah. Liz, uh, will be coming to those meetings to, um, in, in sort of start the dialogue with those committees and commissions. Um, as you know, it's a heritage conservation, recreation, energy and municipal facilities. Municipal facilities presenting a little bit of a challenge, cause right now our municipal facilities is not really what it originally was, it's more of a design review. For the two projects that we're working on. Um, so I wanted to, Ed's gonna help me with that, we'll probably try to go back to some of the original membership. Previously, when it was more of an advisory group of town. Facilities and services, so, um, working on that, but that's, that's gonna be a big one, uh, on Monday night here. Six thirty, and then of course, the twenty ninth of next month. And then, of course, the twenty ninth of next month. Twenty nine, both meetings, but different months. Um they are, we're having our um stakeholders meeting.
And that's a Thursday.
Yeah. Move that one six thirty as well.
And they've been notified, but.
Yeah, we sent out a save the date to everybody.
And can we fit them in here?
Yeah, I mean, I'm this place, I mean, I've configured it to hold fifty or sixty. Obviously, you fold up a few of these tables and.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
I don't anticipate we'll get fifty or sixty. I mean, probably more likely to get twenty five or thirty.
And should the planning board members attend that meeting?
Seven people right here who are probably gonna be there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's the twenty ninth at six thirty.
Yeah.
And listen. Our role of listening is to listen.
Some listening.
Yeah, it helps them simulate conversation.
That's what we want.
We also need to post it.
We need to post it and. Did you, have you invited the select one? Uh not directly a select board, but I think at least one or two of the members. I know I know Kate was on our list, uh Chair of the.
Okay.
Um I mean, that was one of those says we didn't think we needed to invite everybody. We wanted representative of each committee or. Yeah, yeah, I absolutely.
They might want to see.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. And you can.
With the groups, stakeholder groups, what sort of title do they hold? In realtor, real estate agents?
There's there's some representation of Realtors.
Any builders?
Yeah, Matt Dapp is one of them.
Oh.
Um I I can, I will update the list that I've sent out the invitations to, and I will share it again with you guys, so you've got that, so you can see.
I know I've got some.
Obviously, in the in the intervening one month, if you think of somebody else that we should invite, by all means, let's throw it around.
I mean, you get the lake associations on there.
Yeah.
I'll get them.
Yeah, yeah, both Masked Woman, Crystal. Um Dan Regan was invited as a, that was a zoning board and Crystal Lake rep. Um uh Beans, Shirley and Glenn.
Yep.
Um yeah, so I mean, we we had a good list. You guys did, I started with it. Jim and I had sort of brainstormed to begin with. I shared it with you guys and you're like, what about this and what about this? And so I added maybe another ten to that original list.
Yeah.
And in the intervening few weeks since I've seen it, I've a few others have popped into my head. I'm like, oh. So I forwarded something to them and pretty much everybody that has responded so far is like, thanks for inviting me. I appreciate the invite. I look forward to this, you know, this is kind of cool. I think that's, uh we did one way back when, when we first started doing master plan, we had a like a focus group. It wasn't the focus groups after the master plan, but it was before the master plan, when we were pre-planning. And that was that was excellent. It was on like a Saturday morning and we had maybe fifteen or twenty people around this table and it was like. You know, it was really productive, as you could say, hey, what do you think?
Yeah.
And what do you think?
Yeah.
And everybody's comfortable and so hopefully that's kind of discussion we have at this thing.
Thinking back on that uh topic. So these um special districts overlays that we talk about. Particularly around the lakes, Shaker Village, perhaps Enfield Center, you know, there's a couple others. I I think it's gonna be have have to be left up to us to to actually. Hold some stakeholder meeting with those more focused people, is that the way?
Yes, next step.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. This is just the first.
Hmm.
Kickoff. Get a feel.
Yeah. That's interesting. I mean, I was gonna say it during the conversation, but I figured I'd just wait. The lower shake or the Shaker uh Village, that's largely built out. It's really, I mean, there's only three or four more lots that are vacant there. And those are being treated as pre-approved before we had zone.
Hmm.
They they are subject to the original approval of that, and so they're not meeting any setbacks, because there's no room on the lots for setbacks. They're tiny lots and uh we have had a little go around, just in the last week or so, there was a. Um an owner in that development that bought a vacant lot and wants to build a garage on it, which which has happened in other spots. They've done it. And he's gonna build a garage with an apartment upstairs for his sister.
Yeah.
And so some of the homeowners in the association, well, you can't do that. They absolutely can do that, absolutely, because other people have done the same thing, and so.
So is there a?
Well.
It's allowed in our ADU.
Yeah, yeah, alright. It's it's an individual lot.
They don't have to worry about that. It's it's a homeowner lot.
Yeah.
A lot.
Exactly.
So with a garage.
And some people were trying to say, oh, you you can't meet setbacks. Well.
Don't have to.
Nobody in that development, that setbacks. It's it's like, some some cases, it's five feet between the buildings. I mean, it's pretty tight, as you guys know.
So a general question on that very topic is, if if I'm in a homeowners' association. Um let's say it's single family lots. And my HOA says I cannot have rental apartment or an apartment subdivided off of my my house. Yet state law and our zoning ordinance says you can. How does that get settled?
So that's come up a few times since I've been here, what we call private covenants. Our attorney says, don't touch it.
Don't get near it.
That's not our, that's not our purview. So you know, somebody had some kind of private covenant, and it wasn't something we set up. We don't touch it. I mean, land trust deals with their own stuff. That's why they are.
So the the owner who wanted to do something contrary to the HOA would, it's solely on him to fight the legal battle.
Yep, yep.
It's a symbol of our system.
Yeah.
Similar structures.
We don't get in the town, doesn't.
Yep.
HOAs can be more restrictive than the law.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And those private covenants are only as good as the people willing to back them up.
Not less restrictive.
Yeah.
Because 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 our our zoning, our zoning regs for the district, they apply.
Right.
Which is why we don't have to worry about what the HOA's.
Right.
Rules are. There's times where you just take them, because that's what it is, but we don't have to worry about their rules.
Um I also wanted to update you guys. I'm doing a a little bit of zoning enforcement. Still working on exit sixteen mobile with uh non-compliant lighting.
Yeah.
Um there is a illegal sign on Route four, not far from Linda's place. Uh at the Hershey uh.
Yep.
Enterprise. He's got a.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's selling beef.
Yeah.
He's selling beef.
He's selling beef, yeah. Wagyu uh beef and Angus. And so he put up a giant like piece of plywood with.
Four by eight.
Yeah, it's kind of obnoxious, actually.
Yeah.
It is.
So he's he's been put on notice about that. I like Tom. He he's he's a little bit difficult to deal with, because he's like, well, if you won't let me do that, I'm gonna buy a forty foot tractor trailer body. Register it and put a giant billboard on the side of that, which is kind of an end run around us, obviously. If he does that, he he could do that.
Completely do that.
It's.
If it's registered.
The vehicle is registered, but the sign attached to it is still a sign.
No, no.
Is the vehicle.
Sorry, it's a part of the vehicle.
There's a famous one on Route four as you head down toward Durham.
Right.
There's a huge one there that that it went to court.
Yeah.
And the town lost.
Yeah, there's a reason why, right, uh business owners wrap their cars and park them by the road.
Right, yes, yes.
And the parking lot, right, but we see it on Route four.
Since you brought up signs, I I think there probably are some elements of our sign ordinance that need some massage.
Yeah.
Uh I know the, for whatever reason, the signage, for example. That is at Jake's seems inadequate to what he needs to have happen there.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's the cause of our sign ordinance or.
Originally, yes.
That.
It is originally.
Old that predates the current one on the books.
Yes. Well, does the does the uh community center, does that sign comply with our rules?
They gave me for barrels. So the the sign itself does. But what they came in and got a variance for was, you guys had, if you remember, this was last year, oh, two years ago now. Where we said you can only change your message on that sign once every twenty four hours.
Right.
So they came in because of the extenuating circumstances. They wanted it for security, safety. You know, there's a fire on Wells Street or whatever. They wanted to be able to update that more frequently, and so we did give them a variance. Based on the need for the sort of emergency.
But the rest of it falls.
Yeah, internally lit. We will allow those now.
Yep.
So I mean, Bruce Bergeron, I mean, I brought him up to speed, because when he originally, he couldn't put the interchangeable gas price signs out.
Right.
And when I told him that he could totally upgrade those now, he's like, oh, wow, because Lebanon won't let him do it.
Lebanon won't let him.
Yeah, and uh I don't know what you guys think about that community building sign. When when we first approved the changes to the ordinance and that sign specifically, everybody's like, oh my God, I can't believe this. But it's pretty unobtrusive, if you ask me, when I drive by, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm mixed.
Okay.
On that.
Okay. It's better than the high schools.
Nobody's called since we put it up. Nobody's called. Uh we haven't had any.
Then what was there?
It was certainly expensive.
We got all, it was all grant money.
Oh, was it grant money?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, they're close to town.
Yeah, yeah. Um uh Bruce Bergeron's car wash is open.
I agree.
Yes, it opened up this week. Yep. Um and uh I know that was quite a project for him. He, a lot of cost overruns for him. But I I had been in and took a little tour with the electricians and uh it's it's unbelievable, the mechanicals in there. It's unbelievable.
Have you had your car washed?
No, I haven't. I don't, I'm not gonna waste my money, does that?
Expression opinion here, but I think it ties into all that we've been talking about.
Yeah.
Um is the the things that you should be allowed to do and not do.
Yeah.
Downtown. Um the storage building portion of that, while I have no objection to it whatsoever. I guess the best use for that piece of property probably would have been housing.
Yeah.
Clearly.
Um yeah.
So that's something to consider.
I'm I'm looking forward to the number of the third and fourth car wash that's gonna be in town. We need more car washes.
Yeah, just, I mean, I'm I'm at the point where how how much more of those self-storages can go in? But we were talking about the other day, I think it's absolutely a symptom of the housing crisis that we're in. Is that, you know, we're we're under supplied with housing. So those storage units become much more important for people to have a place to put their stuff, you know, if they don't have a big enough apartment, they're gonna stuff.
It's expensive, you know, that people just buy it for a month or two. Would you pay that month after month?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, tell me about it.
But that that big construction project, you guys can see if you go to exit seventeen on the right, as you come downhill.
Yeah.
That's another storage.
Storage.
That's Bob Yokes. He's putting up a gigantic storage place.
Yeah.
And he told me, called me up, he said, I wanna work in Enfield again. He said that took me two years to put it with City of Lebanon.
Seriously, two years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Way to go.
Just put him through the wringer, big time. Um real estate seems to be rebound a little bit. There's some inventory coming on the market. There's a few things, you know, I mean, I was checking. Uh Realtor dot com, there's a few places for sale.
Couple places on the lake.
Yep.
Crazy.
Um. No, just staying surprisingly busy, even though it's it's crappy weather, but. Um construction continues. Liam seems to be straight out with inspections and uh so forth and uh. As I said, Public Works is very busy this time of year, since they're sort of their sole job. Any questions for me?
Well, actually, one for just sort of brought about, Eric there, the uh townwide reassessments.
Mm-hmm.
Is it a townwide or is it the quarter?
No, it's townwide.
Townwide. When, what are the dates for that?
Um the summer.
Yeah, it's over the summer.
Over the summer.
Julie told me today, I asked her specifically if they would be coming back in my house on person. She said no, because they came into my house last year.
Yeah.
But. We just did it in Plainfield and it's gonna surprise a lot of people how much, I mean, you can see it. I mean, we're we're at, what, sixty five now? I mean, our our values are about sixty five percent of what they should be, based on the state's equalization numbers and.
I mean, what that's gonna do to the people on the lakes.
Oh, it's gonna be big.
It's gonna kill you guys.
It's gonna be big.
You're gonna hear the windfall on yourself.
Oh, you're really funny. We've been through this before.
Uh yeah.
Well, actually.
Oh, I got one of.
Exactly what's gonna happen.
Well, I mean, it's, like I said, it's.
That's what I told Julie.
There's two sides of this argument. There's the buyer and there's the seller.
I told Julie today, I said, the land's been in my family since sixty two and you guys are forcing me. And it happened to Eric.
Yeah.
And.
No, no, it's not the town that's doing the forcing it out.
Well, it's the day, whatever you wanna call it, it's happened.
Right, it's not, it's not the town.
Reliance on market. It's the market.
Very sad.
You can ban people who are not interested, play over too much money.
Yes.
New York and Connecticut.
Yeah. Uh I was just gonna say, I will send you guys a link. Uh I I actually appeared on a uh. Uh there's this, uh have you guys ever heard of Communities in Consequence?
Yes. Peter Frances.
So uh uh the filmmaker reached out to me six months ago. Uh and I was working with New Hampshire Housing, who we got our grant from. And I got invited to be on the panel for Communities in Consequence three. And it is now uh hit uh PBS, New Hampshire PBS.
Oh, well.
And it's on YouTube, and I'll send you guys a link.
Oh, please.
Good.
There's there there they did two episodes of Communities Key Communities in Consequence three. One was a city focus, one was a town focus, so I was in the town panel. And I thought it came out really good. I I've actually had a few people reach out to me that saw it, just clicking through uh Steve Schneider, he was one of them, he's like. Hey, I saw you on TV. So uh we've got some good feedback on it, and and obviously it's very timely in terms of the conversation that we we have here every. Couple of weeks, so I'll send you guys a link so you can check that out. It's pretty cool. Uh and uh. Trying to think if there's anything else. No, that's about it. David, you got to go to a uh, oh, that's what we should talk about. Um um Ed concurred. David, you attended an event last weekend.
I did. Um sponsored by the six oh three Forward Foundation. And it was fairly small group of, I'd say, two dozen people. Um and we went through an exercise called the Game of Zones. And what they did was give us a large legal-sized piece of paper. With a lot measuring a hundred feet by one sixty, I think. And what we had to do was place, they gave us um. Four hundred square foot cottages. They gave us a stack double decker, stacked duplex. Um there was an apartment building that I don't remember how many units were in it. And they gave us the town's zoning regs, the setbacks. The amount, maximum amount of coverage. Um all the kind of stuff that we deal with every day. And the exercise was to get eight units of housing onto this lot. Still maintain the, all the ru- all of the rules that are, that were in the zoning. And come in at a relatively affordable purchase price. Or rental price. And it was, it was, it was a very interesting exercise. I'm gonna see if I can get the exact. Parameters and dimensions and maybe someday when we have not a lot to do, if that ever happens. Um it, I I think it would be a fun exercise for for this group to go through. Oh, they also, uh one of the other requirements was arcing, two per unit. So there was a lot that you had to fit to fit in. And I think the leader said there were five different ways that you could do it.
Yeah.
And.
I might have my my jacket.
Don't show us the answer.
No.
Yes, I don't, yeah.
I mean, when I, I think that would be a fun exercise. When I hear the. The parameters and and I'm thinking about, okay, in real life, a developer trying to nego- uh the negotiate these these. Regulations and do what he wants to do. I hope when we're done with our work, that that's a much easier process.
That's.
That that, you know, they can come up with, instead of five solutions, maybe there's ten.
Right.
That work. Mm-hmm. I mean, that 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 was the idea of the whole exercise was. Put yourself in the developer's shoes, look at all the regs. And see how many housing units you can put in and still. Come up with a uh an affordable price, basically. Very interesting.
So just to, just to wrap that up.
This was mine.
Yeah, the question that we should just get at least a board. Um, I don't know if we needed action, but are you guys okay with us paying mileage per day that for that?
Hell yes.
Okay. That was what Ed had said.
Is that what Ed said?
Yeah, well, it's like, whoa. Yeah, well, it's like, well. He's acting on behalf of the planning board. It should certainly have some authorization from the planning board. Not me that can approve it. I, I didn't feel good approving it as.
I make a motion, we approve his mileage.
I second. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Well, where, where, where did you go to for this?
I went to Saint Anselms College.
Okay.
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't know you went to a political.
That's just where they held it.
Yeah, I have a vote.
We just had it.
No, we didn't.
All in favor.
All right, all in favor.
There you go.
Nobody seconded.
Yeah, they did. Eric seconded.
Okay.
All right.
David. David, we have one more item. Uh, we haven't approved the minutes yet.
I'm aware of that.
Okay.
Oh.
Um, is everybody, is, is everybody ready for, to discuss the minutes?
Yes, I make the motion, we accept the minutes.
I second.
Is, is there any discussion? Any corrections, comments? Or did Whitney just do her usual fantastic job?
Gorgeous.
All right, um, all in favor of accepting the minutes as written?
Hi.
Hold it because she's, uh, we have to do a roll call. Linda. How do you vote?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
I vote aye.
I, Phil vote, Phil Vermeer votes aye.
Aye.
Brad. Tim.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
Right. Thank you, guys. Good to see all of you.
Is there any other business anybody needs to discuss?
I just make one mention of what it was that I put together here and handed out and may be self-explanatory, but the whole purpose of this was. Um, to try to communicate to, uh, the consultants. Why it is we might be thinking that these, these districts should be, uh, separate, treated as separate entities. And so there's just kind of a brain dump, just first pass through. Please. Send me some edits, uh, email me whatever you think could be added or strive to. Thank you.
Thank you for doing it.
Yeah, I'll send it to.
Yeah.
We have the digits. Where we can make changes.
Um. Yeah.
I'll send it all out. I'll send it to you guys in those Word files.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's first place. And you're gonna send us the list again of the people that we've already decided that we can't remember or, or found.
Stakeholders. New business?
Anybody have anything else they wanna talk about?
Yeah, we gotta respond to the Canaan.
Oh.
Also, they're coming in for a conceptual. Talking to you guys on the fourteenth. Well, well, no, not if we don't. The, the Canaan one out on. Two, there's two Canaan ones. No, I mean the one on May Street.
The subdivision, regional impact or something.
Yes, they're gonna come talk to you for conceptual on that.
Because their entrance is on May Street.
So, yeah, so there's two. The, the first one. Is the one you, is the one that they're not coming for a conceptual on.
Thank you.
That's the, uh, that's the other, there's two, there's two.
Right.
Possible products on May Street. The one that's all in Enfield, but with impact Enfields Road, because obviously May Street is a road that we maintain.
Yeah.
In Canaan.
Yeah.
So that's the one that I sent you guys and you talked about that, but they're coming in for conceptual. There's another property that actually has. Land on both sides of the, of the town line.
Yeah.
And they wanna talk about subdivision potential with you guys on the forties of that one. Different from the regional impact.
Right.
Okay.
But I guess we do, so we're not going to take, do anything with the regional impact one.
You guys can talk about it now if you want to, or we can talk about it later.
I don't think that has.
No.
Well.
I don't think it has any regional impact on us.
They like to think that they have.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Covering themselves.
It's a curse.
It's, I agree, but I guess it's up to us to say, no, you don't need to come in. We don't need to talk to them.
It's, it's a nice courtesy. I mean.
I agree.
We should just ask DPW if there's any issue with whatever new driveway they're gonna have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I was.
Yeah.
DPW is fine with it.
I'll talk to you.
Well.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, when I was reading through that one.
Yeah.
Probably the only thing that really I can recall coming to my mind was, does the town currently have something in writing? For using that as the turnaround? Cause if they don't, they need to get it out.
Yeah.
Because in the future, that could always, with the new owners.
I think there is a MOU. I think there's gotta be. We've got a few.
I wouldn't guarantee it. There's something in writing.
I know there's one with Plainfield because we.
It should be in the deed.
Yep.
It's turnaround for the town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At the end of May Street.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the Miller property?
I have no idea what the name was.
Yes.
Yes, it was Miller.
Okay, um. There's something interesting about the road there at the end. Um, the town, the Mrs. Uh. The old lady who was there and her daughter painted her house purple, Parker.